Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended for good cause at this meeting?
So move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. We are now moving into the committee and departmental reports and special recommendations. Mr. Superintendent, first we've got the PTA presentation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, our PT SA representative will not be able to attend this evening, so we will not have a presentation tonight.
Okay. All right, the next on the agenda is stellar employee.
Yes, thank you. It is my pleasure this evening to announce the stellar employee for the month of January is Ms. Susan Stallworth. Ms. Stallworth, please come forward with your coworkers, family, and friends. The Escambia County School District's Office of Community Involvement is proud to recognize Ms. Susan Stallworth as the stellar employee for the month of January 2022. Ms. Stallworth is a teacher assistant special at C.A. Weiss Elementary School. She has worked for the district 21 years and in her current position for four years. Ms. Stallworth is a devoted teacher assistant to the students and staff of C.A. Weiss Elementary School. She takes every opportunity to expand her knowledge to better assist the students academically. Ms. Stallworth embodies many things a school needs. Her presence is comforting. She offers assistance in every situation. She is sought after for her advice and wisdom, and students and staff look forward to seeing her every morning. There is never a day that Ms. Stallworth has been unwilling to step in and help. If a student is having a bad day, she does her best to comfort them with a hug and words of encouragement. Some people have a knack for certain age groups, and Ms. Stallworth has the ability to positively impact even the youngest pre-K students. She knows their names and greets them each morning with a smile. C.A. Weiss is a better place because of Ms. Stallworth. Earlier this year, Ms. Stallworth was absent for a brief period of time due to health reasons. Students never stopped asking about her and asking when she would return. When Ms. Stallworth speaks, students respond. They demonstrate respect for Ms. Stallworth, and this is due to her compassion and expectation of excellence. When one staff member was asked how Ms. Stallworth made a daily impact, their response was, "She is a jack of all trades. She can see anything going awry and has the capacity to intervene and ensure a good outcome." Another staff member shared how much they appreciate Ms. Stallworth's reliability and that she is a team player who knows what you need without even having to ask. Susan Stallworth is stellar because of her excellent work ethic and dedication to the staff and students throughout the Escambia County School District. She exemplifies the pillars of people and service, and it is for these reasons and so many others that she has been selected as our stellar employee of the month of January 2022. She will receive a plaque, pin, and a check for $100 from Members First Credit Union. Congratulations, Ms. Stallworth, and please approach the dais.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I just wanted to say thank you and my wife's family. If it wasn't for them, I don't know what I would do. Thomas came in, Dr. Thomas, and it's just been a good thing for me and the children, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, next on the agenda is school-related employee of the year.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I am pleased to inform you that Mrs. Carmen Gustafson is the school district's nominee for the 2022 Florida School Related Employee of the Year. This program recognizes outstanding education support personnel for the significant contributions they make to their schools and district school systems. The program honors one state representative and four finalists. Ms. Gustafson, please come forward with your family, friends, and coworkers. Carmen Gustafson is not only a special employee to the Escambia County School District, she is a special person in our community. Mrs. Gustafson has been serving the Escambia County School District since 2001. She started as the secretary at Courtaula Park Elementary for over a decade, then promoted to the payroll department before joining the district's physical education, health, wellness, and driver education department. Recently, she has followed her heart and love to be around children again and is currently serving as an administrative clerk at Brentwood Elementary School. Focusing on her more recent endeavors, some examples to be shared will include her time in the district's physical education, health, wellness, and driver education department, as well as her time with Brentwood Elementary. Typically, an employee has a job description that goes over their daily duties to enhance system-wide functions within an organization. Ms. Gustafson definitely has been one of those. She embodies the going above and beyond whatever it takes mindset to support others and make them feel welcome and cared for. When she was at the athletic department, she paid out of her own pocket to become a certified fitness instructor so she could provide witness, excuse me, she could provide fitness class opportunities for district employees. Hundreds, if not thousands, of district staff have attended her many fitness classes over the years and have commented on how fun the classes were and how they helped employees stay positive. She would follow up with employees when she noticed they had missed a few classes. She has utilized her lunchtime to mentor elementary students, attend their school functions, as their support system supplies clothing and food for students, tutoring services, and genuine priceless love. Ms. Gustafson advocates for students. She helps be a voice when they are afraid to talk, and she helps bridge the gap between an upset parent and the school by smoothing things over. It's hard to be ever be upset with her because she is so charismatic and listens to what others have to say, always validating their concerns. During her time in the athletic department, she was involved with a local nonprofit organization called Shape Escambia. Through this organization, she helped move equipment to functions, maintain financial records, volunteered at community events after normal working hours, and even helped purchase supplies from personal funds. It did not matter if the event required her to be present at 6:00 a.m. on a Saturday or help out until 11:00 p.m. on a Friday night after a long workday. She was there. Ms. Gustafson is innovative and efficient in her work responsibilities. She is extremely detailed, organized, and makes multiple checks prior to a final submission. Since becoming, since coming to Brentwood Elementary School, she has made an immediate name for herself by offering to be the hospitality chair and creating a fun and energized environment with exercise classes, Friday afternoon get-togethers, holiday events for the staff, and so much more. Carmen Gustafson is a dedicated employee to the district, and above all, she is the State of Florida Employee of the Year because of her consistent and unwavering dedication to the employees and the students of Escambia County. She will receive a plaque from the school district. Please come to the dais.
Yeah. Carmen.
Aparati.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Tell me, this is crazy, doesn't it?
Yeah, this is well deserved.
He skips classes too.
What'd you say?
He skips classes, doesn't he?
I know he skips classes.
So does Mr. Dennis.
Sorry.
Oh, my goodness, this is, this is over the top. I don't even know what to say. I mean, for me to be at a loss for words is a lot, but first of all, thank you Superintendent Smith and the board members for taking the time to recognize me. Y'all have a lot more to talk about than Carmen, I'm sure, tonight. But I also have to apologize to Ms. Kotick because when she called me last week to tell me about this, I started arguing with her, and I said, "I really know, you've got the wrong person. You've got, you know, it's another Carmen Gustafson or something," I'm sure, and she, she kept arguing with me because I just, I couldn't believe this, but I am so, I'm so at all. But I want to, to thank you for the recognition. I was thinking about my career with the school district after Ms. Kotick and I spoke, and, you know, out of the 23 years, I've had, the good days far outweigh the bad, and I think I'm one of the lucky ones because not everyone can say that about their job. I'm very fortunate. I've worked with wonderful people, and for the two women that nominated me, Cassandra Manus and Jennifer Sewell, those women, they are just, it's ironic that they nominated me because they are two of the hardest-working women I know, so for them to think enough of me, you know, I know their work ethic, and for them to, to think enough of me to nominate me, it's just very touching. Mr. Mayo, super boss too. I mean, he worked circles around me too, so I've just worked with some wonderful people. I've made lifelong friendships, and I'm so humble, I really am. Thank y'all so much, I appreciate it.
Mr. Superintendent, next on the agenda is Principal's Advocate for Excellence in School Library Programs Award.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we would like to recognize Mrs. Janet Penrose from Bailey Middle School who recently received the Principal's Advocate for Excellence in School Library Programs Award. If you'd like to come forward, Ms. Penrose. This award recognizes one elementary and one secondary school principal or assistant principal who have demonstrated support in the development of exemplary school library media programs, to promote principals who support the integration of school library media programs, resources, and technologies into the total educational process, and to honor principals who implement research-based library media programs. Janet Penrose has consistently supported the Media Innovation Center and its programs. Mrs. Penrose has provided materials to ensure ongoing success of Bailey Middle School students, from the creation of a Lego wall to the completion of a breakout edebus. Mrs. Penrose has always taken a hands-on approach. For example, when building the Lego wall, she worked side-by-side with the media specialists to finish the project. Any project including the breakout edebus, painting of the Innovation Center, and current ongoing projects, Mrs. Penrose is always available to assist and does so willingly. If additional funds are needed, she helps to find the necessary funds, whether it be for materials and activity or books. Mrs. Penrose makes sure she comes through the Innovation Center each day and interacts with students involved in whatever is occurring. In fact, we did that today, asking about what they are reading, asking what they are building, or asking questions about the breakout project they are working on. She emphasizes critical thinking, teamwork, complex problem-solving, academic excellence, and safety. Mrs. Penrose provides resources and funds to ensure the media specialist is able to attend conferences that enhance her expertise. Congratulations, Mrs. Penrose. Please approach the dais.
I wrote something just because I don't do well without having a script, so. Everyone hopes for a work environment in which they feel appreciated, challenged, supported, and safe. I've been blessed to work for a district where I can say I've had the privilege of all of the above. I go to work every day surrounded by teachers who love what they do and work hard to make it happen each and every day. One of the little parts of that day happens within the walls of our Innovation Center. Back in the day, we used to call it the library, and then it became the Media Center, but they all refer to that same place. Students come in and find a story that speaks to them through the words within its pages, or a breakout activity that gets their minds moving, or a virtual reality experience where they get to experience what they're doing in the classroom through the lens of the VR glasses. My role in all of this is to see the potential in the ideas brought to me, help find resources to make it happen, and work with our awesome teachers to bring it to life. It's been an honor to receive this award and represent the Escami County School District in the process. Thank you, Roberta Wetzel and Lindsay Whitley for nominating me for this award, and a huge thank you to my family for always being so supportive in my career. Thank you.
Next, we have the National FFA Week Resolution. Mr. Superintendent, ready to read that resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution, whereas the National FFA Organization, formerly known as the Future Farmers of America, is an organization of more than 700,000 students studying agriculture, and whereas the National FFA Organization is dedicated to making a positive difference in the lives of young people by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education at the local, state, and national level, and whereas nationally more than 75% of FFA members enroll in a two-year or four-year program of higher education following graduation from high school to prepare for one of the more 300 career opportunities in agriculture, which include more than 8,000 job titles, and whereas Florida agriculture represents a $220 billion industry within the state of Florida and serves an economic engine for the state economy while nationally agriculture employs over 11% of the national workforce, and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve," epitomizes those high standards and qualities of leadership possessed by FFA members, and whereas the Escambia County FFA and agri-science education programs in the Escambia County School District are tremendously successful and extremely valuable in improving the quality of life for Escambia County citizens, and whereas the Escambia County FFA programs will participate in the observance of National FFA Week, February 19th through 26th, 2022. Now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Escambia County School Board by this resolution recognize and commend the Escambia County FFA organization members, their advisors, school administrators, parents, and all who support, promote, and encourage these students of agricultural education on the occasion of the observance of National FFA Week, February 19th through the 26th. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Mr. Stephen Harrell, Director, Workforce Education, adopted this 18th day of January 2022. Mr. Harrell.
We need a motion.
We need a motion first. Mr. Superintendent?
I'd like to move, I'd like to move the adoption of this resolution.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent.
Okay, Mr. Har-
We have some very outstanding agri-science teachers in this district, and one of them is standing to my left here, Mr. Austin Corson. I'm gonna allow him to receive the proclamation, if that's okay, and I'll give him a moment to take the microphone because this is, this is where the rubber meets the road for our agri-science departments.
Thank you, sir.
agricultural education and the FFA and what we do each and every day within Escambia County to grow leaders, build communities, and strengthen agriculture. Every single day in our agricultural education classrooms across this district with the 1,600 agricultural education students, the instructors go in the classroom with an ideal and a belief to create leaders and innovators and people who will fuel the future of American agriculture. Not only are we talking about agricultural and farming principles, but we're talking about the rising costs of input for production agriculture. If you've been a grocery store recently, you'll recognize food insecurity is becoming a real issue for this country, and when we look at trade and regulations and environmental and immigration issues and tax reform and the energy policies, those are the policies and the issues and the strategies and the information that we're teaching in our classrooms. When I introduce myself many times as an ag teacher, people think, "You're going to the field and teaching kids to raise crops," when in reality, we are teaching them to become lifelong thinkers through production agriculture and making sure that we have a generation who is ready and able to lead the future of agriculture. We couldn't do this job without tremendous support from the Board of Education, the superintendent, his staff, our principals, and most importantly, the parents and our community leaders who believe in us. Every single day, we enter the classroom with a belief that we can make a positive difference in students' lives and create a generation that is ready and able to lead the future of our community. The word needs to continue to resonate in this community that we have a dedicated team of educational professionals who teach agriculture each and every day, but not only agriculture life skills, and we will continue, every single day, answer the call of service for our community. Thank you for this recognition, and we look forward to seeing you out in our programs.
Very well. Okay, moving on, we have a Career and Technical Education Month Resolution. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution, whereas profound economic and technological changes require workers who are trained in skilled professions, and whereas career and technical education ensures that competitive and skilled workers are ready, willing, and capable of performing in high-wage, high-skill, and in-demand career fields, and whereas the efforts of career and technical educators, businesses, and industries stimulate the growth and vitality of our local, state, and national economies by preparing graduates for careers that are forecast to experience the largest and fastest growth in the next decade, and whereas career and technical education provides students with a school-to-career connection, helping students experience practical and meaningful applications of a variety of skills, and whereas 70% of the Escami County School District middle school students and 62% of high school students are enrolled in a career academy, and whereas over 700 students are enrolled in Jordan Stone Technical College for Adult Education and Career Certificate Programs. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Escambia County, Florida does hereby observe the month of February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the regular meeting of said board, and that a copy be tendered to Mr. Stephen Harrell, Director, Workforce Education, adopted this 18th day of January 2022.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented by the superintendent. And I will second the motion.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Right. Motion carries five zero.
month to highlight some of the efforts of our students in our career and technical education program. I'm sure you all loved our presentation from our Bellevue Middle School Cyber IT Academy. Those students had a blast presenting that presentation to you, but they have a blast telling you about their career experiences when you come and visit their classrooms too. So for those of you who are getting out and visiting them in those programs, thank you because you're showing them what that career connection is to what they're learning in their classrooms, and those numbers, you know, 70% of our students are in some type of career and technical education program for a reason, because we are creating our business leaders of tomorrow, our employees of tomorrow, and that's really what we're here for in all of our school endeavors, is to create contributing members of society. And our CTE programs across this district are being, they're being led by teachers that are committed to that, that pour their heart and soul into those programs, and your support on a regular basis makes it possible for them to continue to do that. I mean, you're, you're looking at a product of career and technical education from our school district, and this room is full of people who are products of our career and technical education program, so thank you for that continued support, and we look forward to continuing to carry the torch forward. Just wanted to throw this out there and remind you that we had 5,991 industry certifications earned last year, and we're on track to eclipse that this year, even in spite of all the turmoil in the world. We, we talk about employment insecurity and food insecurity. Our CTE students aren't going to have those insecurities as they move forward because we're giving them the skills to rise above all of the things that are impacting us now. The economy tomorrow is sitting in those classrooms today, so thank you all for your help in supporting that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we will now begin public forum. The purpose of the public forum is to give members of the public the opportunity to address the school board on any matter of concern, particularly regarding education and administration of our schools. In this setting, we as board members are not compelled to answer questions or respond to you, and normally will not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue in this venue. However, your concerns will be noted by this board and superintendent for a, a response. As always, we invite you to contact any of us by phone or email or for a follow-up. A list of our meeting times and locations is posted on the Escami County School District website. Speakers must adhere to the guidelines printed on the back of the speaker form. On the form, please be sure to indicate whether your intention is speak at the public forum or to a specific item on tonight's agenda. Please direct your comments to the chair. You are expected to be respectful in your address to the board. You are also asked to use titles and not individual names. Personal attacks against school board members, superintendent, staff, and employees will not be tolerated. If you fail to follow these guidelines, you will be warned by the chair and subject removal if violations continue. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. Ms. Odom, Senator, is a parliamentarian. Ms. Buzzwell is our timekeeper, and we will start the timer with your opening remarks. The buzzer will sound when your time has elapsed. When the timer sounds, please bring your comments to close as quickly as possible. The first speaker is Bruce Parton, Parton? I hope I said that right. And before you start speaking, do we have a Beth Parton here? Okay, you're given your minutes to- Okay, you're given your minutes to him. And a George... Is that Pretty Man? You're given your minutes. You've got eight minutes. Okay. And a Carrie Carroll, right? Okay, you've got a maximum of 10 minutes, sir.
Sir, thank you. Good evening. My name is Bruce Partington, and my wife Beth and I have two children who are proud graduates of the PHS IB program. Our son is currently a junior at Harvard and was a co-valedictorian of his class at IB. Our daughter is a freshman at Northwestern University and was also near the top of her class. Our children would not be at those schools without the IB program. And I'm here tonight because we feel that the IB program is in peril because of some new IB exam policies that will be harmful to the students and their chances for success. We're here to advocate for the students. The two risks that I'm going to talk about are eliminating proper study opportunities and moving to a much riskier testing location. And what is being jeopardized is an amazing success story at PHS. The IB program has one of the highest overall exam passage rates anywhere at PHS, and that success results in recognition for the school and the school district, as well as additional funding from the state for the success in the IB program. The average total of merit scholarships given to the PHS IB senior class each year is well over $11 million, and this is with an IB class of about 80 to 90 students. Each year, PHS's IB program has far more national merit scholars and earns more merit scholarship awards than any other high school in the district. The IB program is crucial to our community. Having a successful program is truly a Chamber of Commerce draw for the community. Not having it would be a strike against the area. Before I explain our concerns, a couple of items of background about the IB program. It's an internationally standardized program with the requirement to achieve the IB diploma set by the International Baccalaureate Organization headquartered in Geneva, Switzerland. Because it is standardized like that, colleges love it because they know what they're getting, students who know how to do extensive independent research, take initiative, and serve the community. IB students develop a strong work ethic and time management skills with a deep and wide academic foundation. One aspect of that experience, indeed the event to which the entire IB program builds, is a month of IB exams, given at the end of a student's 12th grade year in May. And they are different from course final exams or end-of-course exams or even AP exams for several critical reasons. First, if you do not pass your exams, all of them, you will not get your IB diploma. Students are tested in six subjects, and each subject's exam is spread over a two-day period for basically 12 exams. The exam dates and times are set by the IB headquarters and occur on the same days internationally for each course. There are no makeups for IB exams. Students prepare over four years for these 12 exams that are spread over the month. After each exam, the exams are boxed up and shipped to the IB headquarters for external grading. There is but a single opportunity for these exams, and what that means is that if there is a disruption, a lockdown, excessive noise, interruptions, bells ringing, or other things that can interfere with the testing environment, it's game over. If you do poorly on that exam, you've almost certainly lost your IB diploma and the benefits that go with it. As I said, these exams are not in lieu of final course exams or end-of-course exams mandated by the school district or state or even AP exams. They are in addition to those exams. For at least the past two decades, there have been standardized policies for IB seniors that are now being changed in risky and dangerous and unnecessary ways. My son's year was actually the last year to take IB exams in 2019 because the last two years, there have not been IB exams because of the pandemic, and the IB program internationally has found other ways to conduct the final exam evaluations. Before our son's year, my wife has served as a volunteer proctor for the exams for approximately six years, and so she has an even greater understanding of how and why these policies have worked and the wisdom and merit of them. So what is it that's putting these students, your students', success at risk? First, for at least two decades, the IB seniors have not attended regular classes during the month of May. Their PHS final exams are administered before that, so they can concentrate only on their IB exams in May. Our son's last day on campus was April 30th. Students are given that month both to study for and to take the exams and to decompress a bit afterwards. These are exams unlike any other exams administered by the school district. My son said that having that time was crucial to his preparation and was the most productive studying he's ever done. But the IB students and parents have now been told that there is a new district-level policy that prohibits this and instead requires that the students be in school, on campus, and following the regular class and bell schedule anytime they are not in an IB exam, even though their coursework is complete at that point. This creates a substantial risk because this is extraordinarily disruptive and puts these students in a far-from-ideal studying environment because of the inevitable distractions that happen in a school, from other students to the noise of the school, changing classes, bells ringing, plus the risk of lockdowns, which are not uncommon at PHS. There's never been any formal explanation from this policy other than that the district needs these 80 or so IB students to be on campus during the month of May to be counted for seat time due to state audit concerns. But is the school district really that close to the line that it's essential that these 80 to 90 students put their IB diplomas at risk? Why eliminate the opportunity to prepare properly for this important final event? For these students, it's their month-long championship game that they've spent four years preparing for. Since it has been represented that this is a district-level policy and this board is the policymaking body for the district, we would strongly urge that this decision be reversed for the IB program with the prior decades-long, successful practice of giving these students who have worked so hard the best opportunity to pass their exams without this unnecessary risk. The second concern is the location of the IB exams. For decades, again, the exams have been given at the University of West Florida in its conference center. This has been a great partnership between UWF and the IB program because the UWF wants to capture some of these students. Indeed, typically about 10% or 20% of the class goes to the University of West Florida. The facilities are quiet, secure, and appropriate for testing of this significance. Moreover, they provide security for exams because the treatment of the exams has strict protocols. They have to be mailed and shipped in a particular way very promptly after the exams are complete, and there's a post office mere steps away from where the exams are given. And these kids are taking these exams for college credit. They earn college credit if they do well, and they're taking it at a local university, which is appropriate. Administering the exams across several weeks does typically involve parent proctors to assist, but in the years that my wife has done it, this has not been a problem. Most, if not all, IB high schools use parent volunteers to proctor, and the IB provide instructions on what is required. Parents, of course, do not proctor their own students' exams, for example. There are several parent proctors per exam period, and alternates also sign up in case there's a last-minute cancellation. The proposal now is to abandon this system and have the exams at Spencer Bibbs in the midst of an active testing facility and have only teachers or administrators serve as proctors during their free periods and without the close in-house mailing facility. But there, in addition to the general traffic and noise of the facility, the district also has to provide security, make arrangements for extra parking for all of these students who will be there taking exams, and the facility will be subject to the same lockdown rules as other district facilities. It is, in short, in our view and the view of many parents, a recipe for failure. Why are we gambling with what has been proven to work successfully for so many years? Why should these IB seniors in this class and future classes be subjected to an experiment like this with so much clear opportunity for failure? Many students depend on college credit they can get from successfully passing these exams, and many take advantage of bright futures, which is automatic for students who achieve their IB diploma. A student also who passes their IB exams earns the school district an additional 1.3 FTE in funding the following year to support the IB program in addition to bonus money for individual teachers for successful exams. Changing how the exams are administered ultimately puts the program in jeopardy if the pass rates go down, and it gambles with the students' individual futures and the future of the IB program at Pensacola High School. There is also a new IB director and a new school principal at PHS, neither of whom have ever administered these exams before. A majority of the current IB faculty has also never prepared students for an exam cycle. Why are we injecting such new and profoundly risky variables into a proven formula that has worked for decades? In conclusion, we would ask that you reinstate these key ingredients for success: time to study in May and a proper testing environment. Please support these students who have spent four years in this extraordinary and rigorous program preparing for these exams and who have, year in and year out, reflected credibly upon both themselves and the school and the school district as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Now the superintendent will be looking into your concerns. Thank you for bringing it to us. The next speaker, Cheryl Ziegler? Oh, I'm sorry. Did I get it right, Ziegler? Okay. And you're getting minutes donated from Cynthia Brown? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I'm at that age. Hold on. All right. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak this evening. Really thought about what to say to the board, and I'm a little at a loss on how to really articulate it correctly, but I'm just going to go through some bullet points. Teachers are tired. We are mentally drained. The stress and pressure of teaching in a pandemic is beyond what anyone who's not been in a classroom can really and truly understand. Teachers right now have times of they fear their safety from violence, vandalism, sickness, just to name a few. We are wearing multiple hats on a daily basis. We're teachers, we're parents, we're counselors, we're advocates, we're mentors, we're custodians. We're picking up the slack when teachers are out. We're taking extra children in our class when we cannot get subs. We're helping these subs with classroom management and general support. At Escambia, where I work, we've lost two biology teachers. One we lost in the first nine weeks, the second moved at Christmas to follow her spouse because he was in the military. We have hired our navigator to become a biology teacher, which is now leaving another critical vacancy at our school because those navigators are important to our students and to our community. We're holding each other up when we feel like we're going to fall apart. We have teachers that are leaving for various reasons, and that's some of this. Part of it is because of pay. When we come to the negotiating table and the small amount of a raise that's there, it doesn't really show the value that is put on the amount of work that we do. Teachers who have been with the district for years, the years of experience, that can be lost because of all of this coming together. For example, I have a friend of mine who, her husband works at Navy Federal. She's also a teacher at an elementary school. Told me recently they had a teacher come onboard with Navy Federal. She took a pay cut because in the long run, she'd be able to make more money at Navy Federal because she didn't have the confidence that she'd be able to make that kind of income with the district. I have a teacher friend who told me the other day that she's receiving rental assistance because she doesn't have enough money for rent because the rent has gone up. All expenses have gone up in our county. I'm the sole source of income for my family. I'm it. So I am in the process of getting a second job because we've had to move, so my rent's increased, which means insurance has increased, gas has increased, food has increased, electricity is going up. So I spent most of my day off yesterday looking for a second job in order to shore the gap between what I'm making and the expenses. Even when I cut back as much as we possibly can, I still have to go get a second job. So I'm going to be grading, planning, and working two jobs, doing all of these things that I do for my students every day. Other counties and other states that are similar to us, I'm just going to give two examples. One is in Texas. Based on my years of experience, the salary would be $60,000 plus extra money because I teach science. They give extra money for science teachers in that district. Similar county in Georgia is $50,000 for my years of experience. Their health insurance was amazing. I'll have to just say that. I could get, for the same amount of money that I paid just for myself, I could insure myself and my husband for cheaper and have a high-end plan. When you come to negotiations tomorrow for pay, we need to have more brought to the table. We need to be compensated for what we are doing, the hats we're wearing, the work we are doing every day to help our students be successful. I'm afraid that... Because I watched over the weekend the meeting you all had on Friday, and I know you know there's a shortage and you have concerns. I heard the word incentives being used with recruiting, but you need to give those of us some type of an incentive to stay because some of us have years of experience. We want to stay. We want to be with our kids, but we have to be able to sustain our families at the same time. So we're just asking, or I am asking, for when you come to the negotiation table to please bring a better offer that shows that you value, truly value, the hard work that we do for a competitive salary. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, our next speaker is Laura Barney. Barney, sorry. Three minutes. Try to read these handwritings. Pretty good cursive.
Good evening, board members. Thank you for your time and everything that you do. I'm Laura Barney. I teach at Bailey Middle School. When we closed down and went to virtual learning, we stepped up to the task. When we returned and we were doing virtual learning, face-to-face, and hybrid, we stepped up to the task. This year, many of our schools have not been able to fill empty positions nor subs to cover those classes. At Bailey, we lost three teachers, and Bailey is one of our better middle schools. I have never seen a shortage at Bailey like we have this year. Can't get subs to cover those classes. Last week, my two eighth-grade science teachers were out. I covered, did their lesson plans, made sure things got uploaded into Google Classroom, and covered all of that because we did not have subs to step in to do that. We had 11 teachers out on Thursday, no sub coverage. We're splitting those classes. We're taking them in. We're giving up our planning time to step up to make sure that our students are getting what we need and what they need. Sorry. We're split-listing our classes. We want to do what's best for our students, but we are overwhelmed and overworked at this point. We're waiting for any recognition that what we have done matters. Why would veteran teachers of eight years' experience want to stay when new teachers are coming in and they're getting paid the same amount? I don't know any other business that would do that. Eight years' experience and somebody new comes in, they're not going to make the same salary. How can you expect us to hang on to highly qualified teachers when that's going on? I know two young ladies that I taught with that were outstanding who have left because salary wasn't compensatory and the workload has become just overwhelming. I am asking that when you return to the bargaining table, you come with an offer that is a sincere reflection of all the dedication that we have and that we give and that we put into our classrooms during these trying times. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Next speaker, Darzel Warren.
Good evening to the Chair, Mr. Adams, Dr. Smith, and the remainder of the board. I came across a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King that stated, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" And as I thought about this quote, I started thinking about the teachers, the custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, just to name a few of the many who were instrumental in keeping this district going. Tonight, I want to focus on our instructional staff, and I am so proud of Laura Barney and Cheryl Ziegler for coming up and did not know what they were going to speak about. But that being said, our instructional staff have given more than enough, sacrificing time with their family and pushing their bodies to their limits. The public realized real... The public realized real quick how important our schools were and still are during this pandemic. Because of our custodial shortage, our teachers are cleaning their classrooms. They're staying late and coming in early because of the shortage of bus drivers. They are losing their planning time because they are covering classes because of the shortage of teachers and subs. They're eating in their classroom with students. These are only a few of the things they are doing to make sure our students aren't missing a beat. They're continuing to learn a new curriculum in reading, studying for certification and reading endorsement, just to name a few. Each and every day, more and more is asked of them while taking nothing off of their plate. As the saying goes, they're sick and tired of being sick and tired, being overworked and underpaid. Some are walking out the door, and some of their friends and coworkers are not far behind. Your teachers are exhausted physically, mentally, and emotionally. They have stepped up and went beyond, above and beyond the call of duty. They're not asking for much. And as I close, I leave this question for you. What are you going to do for them who have done so much for this district?
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, with that, that concludes the public forum. Next on our agenda is adoption of the minutes. So next, is there a motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
Move the adoption of the minutes for December 9, December 9, December 10, and December 14, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
We have no unfinished business? We have one administrative appointment. Is there a motion?
We need to.
I'm sorry.
Well, do we want to vote on the motion first and then let them introduce?
He needs to read the motion.
Oh, go ahead and read the motion, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So our motion is for Joe Williams to be appointed as the Assistant Principal at Booker T. Washington. He is coming to us from Booker T. Washington, where he is currently employed.
Okay. Now, I will need a motion from the board.
I move the recommendation of the superintendent.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion with the board members? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Joe, Mr. Williams, if you want to come on up, you can.
I'll be brief in my address. I promised I'd take less than three minutes with some folks in the back. But nonetheless, more than anything, I want to thank my family, who's taken on the burden, also being a public school employee through the course of the years to give so much to, by proxy, to the position. I'd like to thank the interview committee who gave me the chance in all this. I'd like to support my administrative team at Washington High School for all the things that they've imparted to me throughout the course of my time there. I'd also like to thank Dr. Smith, as well as Ms. Payne, for opening that door just a little bit for me so that I can get into Booker T. and, you know, keep moving this train forward and do everything I can for the people in the community and the students at Washington High School. And thank you guys for everything that you do. Looking forward to it.
Thanks, sir. Okay, we have no items under school district rules. Next, the next item, business approval, is consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Who moved?
Second.
Second.
Are there any items to be pulled?
Sir, I need to pull, hate to slow the train down, but I need to pull under 13, item E.
Do we got to do a motion on the pulled item first on the consent agenda?
All the other items except that one.
Except the one that was pulled. Okay, so I get a motion on the consent agenda minus the 13-point E.
I move the adoption, well, we've already done that. This, do we have to amend it that we have to pull? And this is the à la carte snacks and beverages for direct delivery to school cafeterias.
Yes, ma'am. Second.
I'll second. That motion was to approve everything on the consent agenda, except 13-E.
That's right.
I said, Holly.
Okay.
She knows whether we do or not.
Any other discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
So now I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the approval of item 13-E.
Can't.
Okay.
If you're, are you going to abstain? You can't move, you can't do the motion.
You can't do the motion if you're going to be abstaining. You cannot participate in the discussion.
I want to participate.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. All right. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, I'd like to, I'd like to recommend the adoption of item 13-E.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Now, you can tell while you're not voting.
All right. And I'd just like to, the reason I am, I pull that item is that one of the companies that is involved in this, my son is an employee at that item. So I will be not voting on that, this item.
Okay. Did I, did I get a second?
Yes.
All right. Thanks. Any other discussion? If not, please vote. Got a little complicated in there. All right.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, sir. All right. I need a, items on the board. Okay, we got, on items on the board, we got the school member travel request. Do I got a motion?
Move the adoption of the travel request.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Escambia County Superintendent Evaluation Instrument. Is there a motion?
So move the adoption of this instrument.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to make sure. It says on the agenda it's for the 21, 22 school year only.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Any other discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, next, we have items from the superintendent. The first item in disciplinary reassignments. Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Student discipline, this is item number 21. Student discipline recommend approval for item A. Disciplinary reassignments as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
I move the approval of the superintendent's recommendation.
A second?
I need to, we need to pull one item. We need to pull the first item for additional act, for action, separate action.
We need to handle this kind of like the consent agenda. The very first item on the grid, that one needs to be handled separately from the remainder of the disciplinary reassignment.
Okay. All right.
Be removed from the rest of the items.
Okay, that'll be pulled. Do I have a motion to approve the disciplinary reassignments except for that one that we pulled?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, now we'll need a motion on the item that was pulled.
And the appropriate motion for that would be if it is the board's will to approve the recommendation of the hearing officer. To adopt, to adopt the order of the hearing officer.
I'd like to move the adoption of the hearing officer's recommendation for this student.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, do we have a discussion?
I'd like to ask the attorney, the hearing officer recommended something different. What did the hearing officer recommend?
The hearing officer determined that the facts did not constitute the offense as charged. And in my independent review of the record, I, his decision is supported by competent substantial evidence, and it is my opinion that the board is constrained to adopt his recommendation.
Okay. So the motion is to adopt the hearing officer's recommendation.
And state the last part of what you said again about the constraint.
When a hearing officer makes findings of fact, the board is constrained to accept those findings of fact unless they are unsupported by the record. And in reviewing, I've reviewed the recommended order, and the findings of fact are all supported by the record. And so the board is constrained to accept those findings of fact. She also made a conclusion that the facts, as established by the superintendent's attorney, did not rise to the level of drug possession. And I, I agree with her legal conclusion.
Okay, so now with the motion.
The determination was made that the student had no ability to know what the substance was. And there is no evidence that was presented to rebut that.
And just to clarify, a vote in affirmative supports the hearing officer's recommendation.
Right. And that's why we handled it differently because the, the rest of the cases that you guys addressed, it was to adopt the superintendent's recommendation for disciplinary reassignment. This is one where we're saying, no, the hearing officer has said something different, and we're going down that road.
Mr. Superintendent, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I think, as our attorney said, with the hearing officer's recommendation, who's us to support that.
Okay. All right. Any other?
I think in the past, we have had it in a different place. And so I think this was, we'll get it so it's not quite so complicated next time.
I, I've sent, we discussed this briefly on Friday, and I've sent an email to Ms. Payne making a recommendation that we do create a separate, a third category under students' items from the superintendent that would just deal with the recommended orders.
Okay. Thank you.
And just for...
That should resolve this issue.
For clarification, we need to go forward with this motion and voting this because it wouldn't be appropriate for the superintendent merely to remove his recommendation for reassignment on that case. It has to be finished in this manner.
Right.
Okay. Dr. Adler?
If you will notice, most times when expulsions come before the board, I'm reluctant to vote for them. And so I can appreciate this separation to, to clarify better because when I, we had a conversation the other day about parents removing their children from public school and taking them to charter school. These are some of the issues for me, that we need to look deeper into the behaviors of these children and try and prevent some of this reassignment and expulsions. So as a rule, I usually don't vote for expulsions anyway.
Any other discussion?
Make sure I'm pushing the right button.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you. Okay, the next item is expulsions. Mr. Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
Yes, recommend approval for item C, expulsions, as noted on the board agenda with details provided in the board backup.
Do I have a motion?
So move approval of the superintendent's recommendations.
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Tor one.
There is no items underneath employee discipline? Our last item under...
Did we take care of the amended expulsion with that one motion?
That's a...
Yeah, the item B was changed to an information-only item. And item C amended just added an additional...
I just wanted to make sure we were all in the same place.
Okay. We're now on agenda item 24, items from the internal auditing. Our last item is, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the audit findings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
We have no items from the general counsel? Is there anything from the good of the order? Okay, if not, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.